Okay. Welcome. Good afternoon and this, basically informal meeting, is just to have a discussion about tonight, our vote for this evening on the annexation and to hear some, from some people who may have some suggestions or any concerns that they may want to express. So, I will have you know that the vote is going to happen as planned. So, I just want to, I want to open this up so that we can help to lay some fears if there are any and to try to show that, listen, this is a, this is a partnership that we're forming here because this development mounted in the farms and the things that are going to happen out there are going to be great for everybody. For the city, the county, the state, private, private landowners. So, we think it's very important that everybody understands that, you know, we're, we're moving forward with what was envisioned, you know, seven years ago. Jason, you want to come up and say a couple of words?
Appreciate you guys agreeing to meet with us. This is, for those of you that didn't meet on the way, this is Steve Nelson, General Counsel for Meredith. You guys know me. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you guys sort of informally here today about the letter and the concerns, the letter that I provided at the public hearing back in late January and the concerns that were expressed in the area on behalf of Meredith. And I don't think there's any disagreement that Meredith and Chief and the county and the city are all going to benefit by mutual cooperation out here at this, at this area. Been talked about for a long time. I think you're being modest at seven years. I think it's been longer than that.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm talking about since the real acquisition and all those things.
Yeah, I mean, we've been looking, talking about this area for a very long time.
Yes, we have.
There's, there's agreement that something needs to happen out here as quickly as possible with all parties involved. There's no doubt about that. I think the biggest concern that, that we would like to express and have expressed when asked is the way this annexation commenced was not in the spirit of cooperation. It was not in the spirit of we should all work together. I mean, we literally, Meredith found out about this when the Herald Mail called and asked about it. And that, that was the biggest disappointment out of all of this. That notwithstanding the prior years of conversation and the many years of planning and prior cooperation before that, Meredith did not get a heads up about this. They were not asked to participate. They were not asked to consent. There was no cooperation leading up to the commencement. And honestly, since then, I think we've been trying to sort of recover from that and understand what, what is the vision out here? What, what is it that the city is planning out here that we haven't been and shouldn't be privy to? And so, I think there's, there's a level of skepticism that went into my comments in January based upon that procedural component of this. And then the rest are, I mean, they're almost secondary to that. I mean, there's some concerns about that vision and how it may impact the Medical Center condominiums in Robinwood, the concerns about the zoning that were expressed. There's some prior agreements out here with regard to Professional Boulevard and future access points and things like that that have not been mentioned, have not come up. So, there's a lot of assuming going on that those access points will be honored and those future connections will be honored. But we don't know that because we haven't had the opportunity to participate and discuss. So, that's, that's where Meredith is coming from. So, again, appreciate the opportunity to come and chat with you guys about that. That's sort of in a nutshell. Steve, did I miss anything?
No, I mean, in the spirit of transparency, I've been with Meredith six weeks now, so...
Oh, lucky you. Wow.
Congratulations. So, I'm just really trying to get up to speed and I think you, you hit the key points. I mean, it's, we're really just trying to understand, you know, what, what the, what was the sense of why annex this Meredith parcel now? And really, nothing else to add.
And I'll go back further. I'm really sorry Kristen isn't here because I had a really good zinger for him.
We'll listen anyway.
So, since he's not here, it might actually be better. Going back, and Lou's not here either. He's one that would remember this, these two. Back in 2005, when the Snook annexation was pending, and it was a very acrimonious annexation proceeding because the folks in Cedar Lawn out there, if you guys know which property I'm talking about with the Snook annexations, out there on both sides of, of Washington Street. And the folks in Cedar Lawn went ballistic about that annexation. That was a petition for annexation by the property owner. The folks in Cedar Lawn came out at a public information meeting that we had on site and at the public hearing and accused the city of orchestrating that whole annexation as a way to force them to annex into the city. And I remember standing there in the living room of the old Artinger House. It was so crowded, I didn't know how we were going to get out the door. I thought we were literally in trouble if they came after us. We couldn't get out. It was packed. And I went to the bat for the city and said, no, the city does not force and compel annexation against the consent of the property owner. It's permitted by statute, which I concede it absolutely is. But the city has never done that before. They won't do that to you. And Kristen and Lou repeated that at the public hearing. They assured those folks, the city's not in the business of forcing people to annex. And here we are, 14 years later, that's exactly what's happening to the lands of Meredith. So, that, that's sort of...
Not, not really.
Well, that's how it started.
I mean, it's totally, this is, this is, you know, totally a different circumstance all, you know, altogether. You're, the, the annexation of, of these lands, which, which I'm sure that there are, there was a pre-annexation agreement.
Nope.
Not yet? Okay. All right. Well, there you go. So...
Yeah. I mean, it, so the Cedar Lawn fear, I agree. Factually, it is different. But what their fear was is that this annexation of, of the Snook property was going to be sufficient to pick them up and bring them in because it would make them contiguous and there was going to be this whole nefarious conspiracy to force them in.
But you explained to them that that's not how annexation actually works.
Absolutely. I mean, I had the privilege and the luxury of trying to explain to them the arcane statutes of Maryland and how they had nothing to worry about. And I, of course, was screamed down and threatened with shotguns and all kinds of other fun stuff. But at the end of the day, I think they calmed down and realized, oh, this isn't what we thought it was.
Right.
So, again, not, not to create a false equivalency, but Kristen did say on the record, annexations are initiated by the property owners and by those individuals. And in this case, it was not. And that has set this particular property owner, Meredith, back a little bit to understand why.
So, so when you use that reference of the Cedar Lawn people, it's, it's much like referencing the condos out at Robinwood Medical Center.
Sure.
Because there's no pre-annexation agreement there for annexation. And since they are individually owned condos, be like individually owned houses out in Cedar Lawn.
Yeah. I, I think that is. Yeah. I think, so the assurance that, that Meredith is looking for on the Medical Center condos is, is a relatively easy assurance to make because that is...
I'm pretty sure that you explained how annexation works, right? The archaic laws.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there's a perception issue. And just like the city assured the folks at Cedar Lawn, Meredith sits here before you today looking for some similar assurance. We didn't get it before it started. We didn't get it at the public hearing. That's why we've continued to ask for...
See, I'm confused. I'm sorry.
Well, please.
I, I am. I'm confused now at this point. You stood in the Artinger House, surrounded by all these mad people.
Restless natives.
And you explained to them the archaic laws of annexation. And they understood. But, but you haven't explained the archaic laws of annexation to Meredith.
Here's what I, here, okay, if we want to continue in that factual context of Cedar Lawn, once those folks, I mean, as much as I'd like to think that they believed and trusted me to explain to them, it really wasn't until the city members of the council gave them that assurance from up here at the public hearing that I think that's what they were satisfied with, that the city was not up to something. They were not doing what they thought was going on because they asked and...
Let me ask you a question. Of course, I know you're much more knowledgeable about this than I am. But can the city arbitrarily annex the Robinwood Medical Center condos?
If, if the city boundary were to get contiguous, as you now know, the city, if they can gather the consent of 20% of the property owners, then yes, you can initiate an annexation proceeding without the consent of 100%.
Right.
So, that 20% rule, if you will, is, is the, is what creates the ability to carry with an annexation, non-consenting owners.
Right. So, you would have to get 20% of the people who own the condos at Meredith's Medical, Robinwood Medical Center to actually want to annex and pay double taxation and, and do all those things. You think that's plausible?
I don't, I didn't think it was plausible for you to be doing what you're doing now.
It's not the question I asked you, Counselor.
So, I would say, whether I think it's plausible or not, the important part is you tell me it's not going to happen. I don't think it's viable. I don't think it's likely. But I haven't heard the city say that that's not the intent of this proceeding or the proceeding that comes after it because once this parcel annexes, the city boundary moves. And then the subsequent annexation after that, it moves. Each successive annexation moves closer to Robinwood.
Moves closer.
10 years ago, 15 years ago, when we were talking about this, the Medical Center condos were the objective of the city. That was the overt, pronounced objective out here with regard to annexation. Now, as...
Luckily for you, this administration wasn't in place 10 to 15 years ago. And unfortunately for you, this administration will not be in place two more years from now. So, you know, you trying to get a guarantee from this administration that this won't happen, that there is no, no other objective, it's not going to happen only because two years from now, all that could change anyway.
I'd settle for less than a guarantee. I would settle for an assurance that that is not the objective of this annexation. Again, where I started with this is that the substantive issues related to the annexation are relatively secondary in the eyes of Meredith compared to the fact that this was initiated and commenced without them.
Got you. I understand that.
Therefore, having initiated a somewhat unconventional annexation proceeding without the consent of the primary property owner sets concerns in place that wouldn't otherwise be there if it had started differently. So, I understand it's unlikely. But this is unlikely. This was unlikely until it happened. So, I'm not looking for a guarantee. What I am looking for is some acknowledgement and dialogue, assurance, if you will, that that isn't the objective here. That this isn't the first of many annexations that will happen without the consent of Meredith as property owner, basically.
I understand that. You know what? And I, I wholeheartedly, you know, understand where you're coming from and understand what Meredith is concerned about. I can't speak for my counsel. I don't know what direction this counsel or the next counsel will want to take when, you know, things change because things change every election. So, I can only tell you that, you know, I can't answer for them. I can answer for me. Unfortunately, that does you no good because I have no voting power.
That has not been a conversation. We've, that's a first time. But it's really, you know, it's kind of a good idea. Thanks for planting that seed.
Shelley's glad you brought that up.
Yeah. That, that has not been a conversation.
From my, my standpoint, the, the thing that predicated all this is the construction of a bridge over the creek.
Sure.
And that's opening up that property. That property's going to need to develop. We're going to need to extend water and sewer into that property. And annexation is how we afford to do that. So, that, that seemed to be the thing that makes the most sense is to do it at this time. And maybe, yeah, I didn't realize that, that Meredith would feel that way about it. But it, it seems to make sense if we want to get water and sewer out there.
I don't, I mean, again, nobody's arguing that it doesn't make sense. I mean, there's, there's a logic to the extension of the city boundary out here. There, there's numerous pre-annexation agreements that are out in the area. This property doesn't have one of them. But it is a lot, again, it's logical extension. I think it's the unconventional manner in which it was conducted that has caused the biggest concern. I've said that now three times. That is the truth. This is, to my knowledge, the first time the city has unilaterally initiated an annexation proceeding like this. Now, the small part, when there were small parcels where like there were some cleanup annexations that were done a few years ago, that was sort of different. That was where there was bifurcated parcels. But to my knowledge, and again, going back to 2005, when I had that very conversation with the city, although they knew at that time that they had this power, it was never implemented. It was never the policy, policy of the city to do that. To my knowledge, it's the first one where it has done that. And that has caused a significant ripple of concern to go throughout Meredith, everybody involved with Meredith, the chief property and everybody else out there that, well, if this is happening now with regard to the Meredith's property, which is 75 of 100 acres, who's going to be the next that finds themselves in the midst of an annexation that they didn't request? Doesn't mean it doesn't make sense, but when it gets thrust upon you as opposed to you petitioning for it, it has a whole different feel to it.
Well, I'll, I'll echo, hang on a second, one second, Steve. I'll echo what Emily said. There has not been a conversation about the Robinwood Medical condos. There's not been a conversation.
That does give me some level of assurance.
Thank God for that. Yes, Steve?
One thing that's been missed in this conversation are the legal limitations on an annexation and what the city's powers are to do. The city can initiate, since as we did here, an annexation based on the permission of 20% of the assessed value of the land. That initiates the annexation. But there is a referendum provision. So, if it is passed by the mayor and council. But you're not going to have a better protected, essentially, piece of real estate around the fringes of the city than you would places like Cedar Lawn or Robinwood Medical Center. Because if it goes to referendum, it's subject to a vote of all of the unit owners or residents of that particular area. So, if it was the city's intention to try to do that, which obviously this conversation has revealed that it is not, ultimately, if you go to a referendum, it would still have to get at least 50% of the, of the owners to sign off on it at that point. So, I would say that of all of the properties that are in that general vicinity, there's probably not a property out there that's better insulated against an annexation than Robinwood Medical Center.
Exactly. I liken it to trying to annex Fountainhead, you know. It's a nice pine to sky kind of thing.
All right. I mean, if we want, if we want to engage in that, then I'll continue to justify it by, by getting into that. So, the annexation statutes do provide multiple procedures. And the most conventional is the initiation by petition. And then the next is the initiation by the municipality, which requires 20% of either the voting residents or the registered voters within the area or the property owners, depending upon the number of voters. In this case, it was the latter. The city initiated it of its own volition with 20%. It was the 20%. That's different than what the statute provides for. I provided the, the case citation, which Jen and I have talked about. We have a bit of a disagreement there as to what it actually means. But I can assure you that the city initiating under that statutory provision and then being the consenting property owner is extraordinarily unconventional. Extraordinarily. And Steve's, Steve's point about the condos being the perfect way to insulate because of the power referendum, that may be true. But if, for example, the city were to purchase one condominium unit, if there were to be contiguity established out there into the medical center and one condo unit were purchased by the city, the city would have some authority to do what it's doing now if it were 20% of the area. So, if you could find a condominium unit that were priced right and buy it, you'd have some authority to initiate this very type of annexation under that justification, which seems unlikely.
Another good idea.
It seems unlikely.
You keep giving us all these ideas.
But that's what's happening right now. It's what's happening now.
The reality of this conversation is we could sit here all day and come up with ideas that, that could happen. But I'm here to tell you that that has not been a conversation. It's not the intention. It, it wasn't even discussed. So...
And I do appreciate that. But I hope you can understand this isn't an exercise in what is...
Did you want to say something, Jen?
This happened. And this happened without the consent of the property owner of 75% of this land area. This happened in an annexation that didn't even mention Meredith. It said Foggy Bottom and other lands. And this 75 acres was the other lands. So, this is a scenario that actually happened. It is not an exercise in, in sort of unlikelihood. This happened. This is why we're sitting here talking. All these other things may be speculative. I mean, I get it. The, the Medical Center's is much more speculative than this one. But it's, it's, it's just, look, if the assurance is easy to give, I, I mean, I'll, I'll take it and we'll discuss how valuable it is. So, I do appreciate it. I really do. And I think it's sincere.
May I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Does Meredith expect the city to annex or you would be requesting annexation for the hospital property itself?
At, at what point in time?
At any point.
You know, we've not talked about that at Meredith because honestly, there's a whole, there's a whole set of sequence and dominoes that would have to fall. I mean, it's not currently contiguous.
Correct.
And it does have a pre-annexation agreement associated with it. And in between it, there's an 18-acre parcel that has one pre-annexation agreement for the hospice parcel. The question, I guess, would be if the city boundary got contiguous to the hospital, would Meredith's petition to come in? I don't know the answer to that question. I mean, I would throw back, what's the city's intention when it becomes contiguous because it has a pre-annexation agreement, which was required by the city?
Correct.
Which would require everybody from 2003.
Sure. And you require them with the intention that when the corporate limit becomes contiguous, you...
City may. Right.
You may. But the, I mean, obviously, intentional policy is to give you authority to do it.
Right.
And, and I'm not aware where you've, you've missed the opportunity to exercise that because that's how you grow the tax base. It makes logic.
Well, right. If you grow the tax base. Correct.
Right. I mean, I think the hospital probably has been a point of contention in some of the annexation conversations of the past. I think...
Discussion, yes.
Yeah. Because the effect on the water sewer rates and things of that sorts of tax-exempt parcels. So, you don't get the upside from the taxes, but you get the downside from the water. All perfectly legit. I think Meredith would be open to a consideration that if, if the city's concerned about the annexation of the hospital and Meredith is concerned about the annexation of the medical center, there's obviously some common ground there. If we can figure out a way to do this, this annexation in this area as a whole in a mutually agreeable way, Meredith is open to talking about that. Chief is open to talking about that. So, you guys don't have to feel that you need to figure out how to do this on your own. These property owners are willing to talk to you about it. I mean, the days of fighting over every single annexation to the death, I think, are over.
I certainly hope so. Yeah.
My dream, I'll be in here next year fighting with you. But I, I think that the, the past bad blood out here, I think, has, has gone. It's dissipated. And now it's looking at it a little more logically and coolly. Like, okay, in the grand sense of things here, what makes the most sense for all these parties? So, I think that's a long-winded answer, Mike, to your question. Meredith doesn't have any designs to force that issue. And so, if, if that's a concern that looms out there, and I think, you know, school's probably in the same, same category. You've got a pre-annexation agreement with the school, a tax-exempt parcel, probably a decent utility customer. You know, before you guys would try to annex that parcel, you'd have to figure out the pros and the cons. I think Meredith would be in the same camp of, of having that conversation with you.
Any other concerns that you have?
The zoning. Steve and I have talked. It was in my letter, maybe 10 specific uses that are either not permitted in the proposed IMU or are permitted only as part of a mixed-use building. Some representative examples of that, a child daycare center, for example, is currently permitted in the county, would not be permitted in IMU except in a mixed-use context. A pharmacy, that is not something that the IMU permits. We would like that to be permitted, again, because it's medical orientation. That's what Meredith's concern is here, is the medical uses. Things like outpatient mental health and substance abuse centers.
Isn't there a pharmacy in Meredith?
I'm sorry?
Isn't there a pharmacy? I mean, I know there's at least one in Robinwood Medical Center.
I think there is in the medical center. How about the hospital?
There is in the medical center. But that could change, obviously, over time.
Got you.
So, things like that. I mean, the biggest one that really jumped out was the medical and diagnostic laboratories, which are currently permitted in the county's ORI but would not be permitted in the IMU in the city. Again, a medically oriented use that Meredith would like to have if there's any way to tweak that language in the IMU.
I think it's pretty, it's pretty evident that mayor and council, who pass zoning ordinances and those such things, have the ability to change those such things. So, you know, I, I know as it was explained to me that a pharmacy, like one pharmacy in particular that does basically just pharmacy, is different than a pharmacy that does retail of other items because they're looked at as a retail of, you know, commercial property as opposed to a pharmacy. So... But anyway, again, those, those are the kind of things that everyone that, that I have ever spoken to in the last seven years for sure, if not 10, knows that there, there has to be changes out in that area to accommodate the kind of growth we want to see and to help facilitate those higher dollar hourly wage kind of facilities in that area. And I have never spoken to anybody who's said, I'm never going to change the zoning of this or I'm never going to, you know, give an exemption for that. Or I've never heard anyone say that. So, I believe that all those things are possible to a degree that makes sense.
Okay.
Which I believe is what you would want to see.
Yeah. I, I can't ask you to change the zoning as we sit here. I understand that.
Can't do that. Right.
I mean, I'd love you to have that power, but it's just impossible.
Sure. So would I.
So, no, I, I think all it is, is again, to have a positive dialogue where you guys say no. I mean, I think a request like that would be met with sympathetic ears and that's... These are relatively simple requests. I mean, again, don't, don't get me wrong. You know, the spirit of, of the opposition here was to say, we're here. You know, we, we weren't asked to participate upfront, but we're, we're not just going to not participate at all. So, Meredith intended to participate. That's why they came to the public hearing. Essentially, the letter's why we're here today. Not asking for guarantees. We're not asking to wave a magic wand and change the zoning. We're asking to be heard. We're asking to work. If it's a cooperative relationship, it's a two-way street. You know...
You're never going to find a more cooperative board that would listen to your concerns and try to find solutions.
I do appreciate that.
Steve?
Just like to put on the record too, that staff has already met with Mr. Davis on the issue of the zoning. And he, he was a list of, it was about 10 items, I think, or so. And from a staff's perspective, the vast majority of them seem perfectly reasonable to process tax commitments for. There was one we had a bit of a concern with. But for the most part, just about everything that they're seeking, from a staff level, we don't have an issue with it. We don't foresee a planning commission most likely having any issue with any of them either.
Right.
So, the vast majority of them should go through just fine.
Appreciate that. Anything else, Steve? The last thing, I, it is, it's related to the agreements that both Meredith and Chief have with the county currently with regard to Professional Boulevard. I can't speak to the substance of Chief's agreement with the county. Meredith's agreement is, is pretty much just about future access to Professional Boulevard. I believe that the right to connect to Professional Boulevard is going to be sufficiently documented in a deed reservation when the property is conveyed to the county. So, I don't think it's of much consequence. I think whether, whether it goes... So I don't think it's of much consequence. I think whether it goes in or whether it doesn't, I think that is fine. But I do think chief has some concerns as to whether or not the agreement, or multiple agreements, I'm not sure if there's more than one, that it has with the county, whether they would still be honored by the city if the annexation were to occur. And I don't know what the conversation was with Professional Boulevard, whether that road stays in the county or whether it comes into the city for maintenance.
That's all being hammered out currently, actually.
Yeah. That would affect what happens with those pre-existing agreements with the county, which may or may not have contemplated the change in jurisdiction. I believe ours sufficiently does. I'm not sure about chief's. But I think it's a significant issue that ought to be kept in mind.
I can think of 10 examples where the city of Vagertstown has accepted control over a road that was built to spec, to city spec. I can only think of probably three that were not built to city spec, that the city didn't take over. So I would expect for sure that the city would take over this road if it indeed has constructed the city specifications. I don't know, I mean, if you talked with Rob about any agreements with chief, that would have a problem?
Yes, Rodney, now, we did have part of the discussion. It's part of the bullet points for later tonight, where we'll continue a discussion with chief. We spoke about taking over the county agreement, but we think we could do more with chief as an addition to the city taking over to work together with them for an increase and who actually looks at the stormwater management fund and for the length of term. So we have it as a bullet point for a future discussion.
Fantastic.
Anything else, Buddy?
I don't think so.
Any questions from council? Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Welcome to the mad, mad world.
Thank you very much.
Where'd you come from?
Florida, Jacksonville, Florida.
Jacksonville? You moved up here six weeks ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
It sort of ripped the band-aid off.
Buddy, you jerked that puppy off. All right. Okay, council, anything else? If not, we're going to adjourn.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.